On the meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education to order, call the roll please.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Here.
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Dr. McFadden.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Rickman.
Here. A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, our citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, as citizens of Mount Clemens Community School District, can address the board with any your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you state your name, come through them, roster them, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry this evening. If you would like a written response to your inquiry, we have a form that you fill out and give it to Ms. L., and you'll be provided with a written explanation or a written answer within seventy-two hours. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Wherever you feel comfortable.
Jason Monk, two-six-two Cambridge Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan. Pledge of Allegiance has just brought back memories of being an old board member. So forgive me, Mr. President, if I go over three minutes, don't flag me because I'm making a presentation to you and the board. I would like to, we, under the guidance of the superintendent, of his leadership, he brought together a team of us that put on our first annual golf outing. And it was just a joyous, wonderful occasion. We actually used one of the facilities of an alumni of Mount Clemens. And I just want to just, I know there was something that was said in the past, but thank all of our supporters, our, just our donors, and I don't want to start naming names because I'll forget somebody, and I don't want to do that.
I had the full list, sir, and said it at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. So this is the annual trophy that will be housed here at the school. And what we did is that the winners got a replica of this trophy. But as you see on each side, and this trophy would be able to have twelve plates put on it. So the winning team from each year, we placed on this trophy, and this trophy will be housed here at the direction of the superintendent where we'd be displayed at. And the winning team for this year was, for twenty-twenty-five champions was Team Dempsey. So we had Tom, Clint, Bill, and Chad was our first place. We had three slots, but they were the first place winners, so they were the champions of our golf outing. And I just want to present this to you, Mr. President, to you and the board, because without you guys' leadership and allowing us to do what we do, and everybody knows me, when it comes to the kids, you just let me know what I gotta do, and I'll make it happen. I've been putting on golf outings, probably, this actually will be my sixteenth golf outing that I put on. So I've been doing them for a minute, I've been doing them for a while. So it was like second nature to me. But I want to give a special thanks out to Kelly in the business office, because she was the one who was the, everybody contacted her, they sent everything to her, she kept everything in line, kept who paid, who didn't pay, who's registered, who wasn't registered. So I just want to give out a special thank you to Kelly, because she really, really was the backbone to this whole entire golf outing. But I want to, you know, especially think of volunteers, everybody who came out, who participated. And if you couldn't come out, I know you sent your warmest wishes, that everything go well. And we had a beautiful day. The golf course was great, we have great fellowships, and the best thing was that, I think, everybody left with something from the golf outing, and that's what we wanted. But the most important thing, we was able to raise funds for the Mount Clemens kids. So I just want to say thank you, and I want to present this, Mount Clemens Community Schools Golf Outing trophies, first year, and we'll come back every year and present this to the board, under the leadership of the superintendent.
Thank you.
This is a good time to name here, we'll just put this.
Yeah, 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 sit it right there.
We'll just sit right there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, you, that meeting after the golf outing, you know, there was a lot of stuff said about the golf outing and the participants, and a lot of stuff was said about you as well.
Oh, I appreciate that.
It was all positive, though. We appreciate your efforts in that endeavor. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda are action items. Under the action items this evening, item five, the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda number five A, approval of minutes. Five A one, the November twelfth, twenty-twenty-five committee of the whole work session. Five A two, excuse me, October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting. Five B, approval of bills for payment. Five B one, October bills for payment. Five C, annual tax collection resolution. Five, excuse me. Five D, amplify CKLA purchase. Five E, e-Spark renewal. Five F, Title One crate purchase. Five G, second reading and adoptions of policy twenty-two-ten, curriculum development, approved courses revived. Policy twenty-two-sixty-six, non-discrimination on basis of sex and education programs or activities revised. Policy twenty-four-twelve, homebound instruction program revised. Policy forty-one-sixty-two, controlled substance and alcohol policy for commercial motor vehicle driver, for commercial motor vehicle drivers and other employees who perform safety-sensitive functions, revised. Policy fifty-one-twenty, assignment within district revived. Policy fifty-two-seventeen-point-zero-one, bullying and other aggressive behavior towards students revived. Policy seventy-five-forty-point-zero-two, digital content and accessibility revised. Policy seventy-five-forty-one, electronic data processing disaster recovery plan rescind. Policy eighty-three-hundred, continuity of organizational operational plans revised. Policy eighty-three-oh-five, information security revived. Policy fourteen-twenty-two, non-discrimination, equal employment opportunity and anti-harassment replacement. Policy fourteen-twenty-two-zero-two, non-discrimination based on genetic information of the employee rescind. Policy sixty-two-twenty-three, section five-oh-four-eighty-eight, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, technical correction. Policy sixteen-sixty-two, anti-harassment rescind. Policy twenty-two-sixty, non-discrimination and access of equal educational opportunity, technical correction. Policy twenty-two-sixty-point-zero-one, section, section, excuse me, five-oh-four-eighty-eight, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, technical correction. Policy thirty-one-twenty-two, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunities and anti-harassment replacement. Policy thirty-one-twenty-two-zero-point-zero-two, non-discrimination based on genetic information of employees rescind. Policy thirty-one-twenty-three, section five-oh-four-eighty-eight, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, technical correction. Policy thirty-three-sixty-two, anti-harassment rescind. Policy forty-one-twenty-two, non-discrimination, equal employment opportunity and anti-harassment replacement. Policy forty-one-twenty-two-point-zero-two, non-discrimination based on genetic information of the employees rescind. Policy forty-one-twenty-three, section five-oh-four-eighty-eight, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, technical correction. Policy forty-three-sixty-two, anti-harassment rescind. That is the consent agenda. The chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Member Dee Walker.
Support.
Second, Member Hammond. Is there, are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to adopt the several policies that I read? Mr. Chair, any additional input regarding the policies?
Just mostly replacement of policies and technical corrections. We went through this with the superintendent and Wayne from Diola, and we're all set and ready to update these policies.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? He ain't seen none. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries. There was a presentation that we're having. You want to move it up in front of this?
Yeah, let's move it up.
We're, I'm asking to amend the agenda to place item seven, to move item seven in front of item six. The item seven is under informational item. It's a presentation, and I'm asking to put that up before, make that the new item six, and everything else drop down.
Motion to move item, to change item seven to item six, and to change item six to item seven.
Support.
Moved by Member Cahoon to amend the agenda to change item seven to item six. It was seconded by Member Dee Walker. With that motion, item six will now become item seven. Item seven will become item six. Any questions for clarification? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Item six is now the presentation. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening, board, community members, and staff. We are going to have a presentation. Thank you for allowing us to move this around for the sake of time for Mr. Welch. Mr. Bartel Welch, I asked to come and do a presentation. We've been in some conversations about his program, and I don't do it any service trying to explain it, so I asked him to come and explain Code Three-One-Three slash five-A-six. I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Welch through and see his program in action down at Cass Tech High School in Detroit. Mrs. Lowe, our college and career success coach, made the connection. And we had the opportunity to talk about possibilities here in Mount Clemens that Code Three-One-Three is doing currently. And I encourage you all, after he gets done tonight sometime, to just Google the program. Mr. Welch came out and visited, took a visit with me and Dr. Lewis toward our campus. You all know that we have been looking to bring back life in our historical building, and so there's some program opportunity for not just our students, but the community that is in the tech's AI world that Mr. Welch implements through Code Three-One-Three. And it just so happens that he lives five minutes from here, so this is in his backyard. He was excited about this opportunity to bring to our kids and community. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Welch, and I'll talk to you about some of our plans and ideals that you'll be hearing for the future.
Good evening. I don't know if you need for the.
For the microphone?
You need to be in the microphone, yes, sir.
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you for having me, first of all. Second of all, I love the school. I'm going to just say that right off the bat. Even my son, I have both, two of my three sons with me, two of my four kids with me and my wife, and my son, he attends Chippewa Valley, so we're up the street. But soon as we pulled up, this is his real first time being on campus, he was like, whoa! Like, he, he's just, I wanted to throw that out to you guys, because he's loving the school and, you know, being at another school that's right up the street. And he has two friends that just transferred from Chippewa that are here, and he just found out they're actually here as we speak. He's like, can I run out and go see them? So just wanted to throw that out there, just so you'll know, his excitement too for coming over. He's, can I transfer? So I don't want to say that too loud, because you were like, yes.
I like that kid thinking.
Say less.
But no, it's exciting to me because, you know, I've been looking at bringing programming this way. And when I say this way, out to Macomb County. We work in one school in Macomb right now, and that's in Warren, at Academy of Warren, which is right on the edge, right? It's at Eight Mile and Shaner-ish area. So it's not really my backyard like this is, okay? So, you know, our goal with Code Three-One-Three is to essentially be the future-ready workforce trainer of our youth, okay? We train in all the different steam fields, so we include arts in that, so science, tech, engineering, arts, and math, correct? So we teach everything from coding, robotics, AI, cybersecurity, drones, game development, web development, as well as music production and more. So anything you can think about that many students or people may say is a difficult subject, that's what we teach, okay? But it is also the skills that are needed right now for our youth to be a part of in order to be ready for our very technical-focused future, okay? As we hear more and more about AI, especially, and these different things, well, there's other technologies moving just as fast as AI. You know, we know about things being replaced in, you know, with robots in manufacturing and other, even McDonald's is starting to get, you know, robots and self-service options and things like that. So our youth need to be ready for that. So we're trying our best to create more producers of technology and not just consumers. So bringing the program out this way is very key for me, because we work everywhere, and I'm not working in my own backyard. So that is a problem. Even though I'm born and raised in Detroit, so my heart was there to start, but we're looking to expand. We are working with some organizations right now in Ohio, some in Indiana, some in New York, and some in Florida. So we're not new to this. We're six years in, starting in twenty-nineteen, but over this six-year period, we have worked with over seventy-six thousand youth in the metro Detroit area. That number, to me, means a ton, and that's why I always bring it up, because we've worked with more students in the STEM-related fields than any other organization in the state of Michigan. That includes Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, Junior Achievement, DAPSEP, and more that I can name that are more like household names, okay? But on top of that, we work with all of those organizations and provide programming. So to be able to come here, and when I was, you know, talked to Mr. Roper and Ms. Lowe and all of them when they came to Cass, because I invited them there because I wanted them to see us in action. It's a difference between me talking, I can give you stats all day, but to see it in action and actually what the kids' faces look like, to talk to some of the students, because I know Mr. Roper, he spoke to a couple of students there, everything, you know, to see what they were getting out of that experience, and to see that we can bring that out here and allow our students in this area to get that same experience. I have a slight presentation video. I don't know if we have something that I can connect it to, to show you something. If not, I can send it later, and you guys can view it. You want to do it that way?
You can send it.
Okay. So I'll send that later, and it's more, it's video. It's a video, well, two videos, and then like a curriculum packet. You guys can, you know, look at that later at your leisure. But the purpose in those two is, again, to see things in action. Like Mr. Roper said, if you Google us, you'll see a ton of articles, videos, news reports, everything that's out there about who we are in the community. So I didn't want, I know, I want to open it up for questions and see if there's any specific things that you guys would like to know. But before I do that, I just want to say, you know, our goal is to give access, okay? You know, I always speak about our youth and the things when I was growing up in the city of Detroit, my mom was an educator in the city of Detroit. You know, we were told you had to be a doctor, you had to be a lawyer. Engineer started to become a thing, or you had to be able to dribble a ball or catch one in order to succeed in life, right? And students and children are given a ball at a young age, without question. You hand it to them and say, hey, this is how you dribble, this is how you throw, this is how you kick, this is how you catch. But we're not doing the same thing when it comes to STEM education. So that's what we're trying to do, is give that ball at an early age so they can learn it the same way that you would learn a sport, okay? And it be as accessible as a sport. Because what we've learned is, the problem is not the want to be involved in STEM subjects, it's the access to it. And that's what we're trying to bring out here to Mount Clemens. So I'll open it up for.
So I'll give you some more context. So when Mr. Welch visited, one of the things that we are going to explore is creating that space in our other building on our second floor. And so the idea would be, you know, as we grow in need, you know, from a couple of classrooms to whatever we need to have our kids have access and opportunity right across the hallway, potentially after-school programming, we're looking at starting drone programming kind of as soon as possible. That would be open for our students, but also for community at nighttime. So the community would be able to take advantage of that opportunity. One of the things he didn't talk about, because there's a lot of facets to it, but the drone thing is just really exciting to me, just like it is to kids. And if you watch the news recently, you see Amazon is delivering packages in Oakland County with drones right as we speak. Mr. Welch's program has a drone arm to it that the students go through this program, and that would be free to our students. They go through this program, they come out with a FAA license that's right up under a pilot license certified. So right now, he has, or companies that are reaching out to him saying, hey, we need drone flyers. And so there are jobs waiting for our students and people in our community and adults. But so we're looking at potentially bringing that program and that access right across in our empty space that is sitting there, ready to be used. We talked about potentially adding, the opportunities are endless, right? We have space, which is the first thing. The other thing is, we may even look at adding some of this to an elective class toward the end of the day, where students will be able to potentially go sixth and seventh, fifth and sixth hour, and then right over to the after-school program. So I just wanted him to come and present. I was so excited. I mean, this has been moving fast. I went to seeing it, talking, you know, I'm gonna talk to kids wherever I go, and it was on. Then we went to visit his office space, which is downtown Detroit. It's unbelievable. And I'm just excited for this opportunity for our community. And maybe we'll put together something, and I can invite the board out to see it in action, too. I think that'd be a good idea, so.
Yeah, I love that. And just piggybacking on what he said about the drone technology, that's like one of our key programs right now. We've been teaching drones for six years since our inception. Drones weren't really the height of conversation six years ago like it is now, right? You know, what, like he said, we have companies knocking on our door right now trying to find pilots, because they know we're training pilots and we're certifying them. The youth can obtain their Part One-O-seven FAA license at the age of sixteen. And at sixteen, which we have right now, about five pilots that came through our program that are currently working, they're making anywhere from forty to a hundred dollars a hour flying a drone. So this is, this is not something like they're going to get a job at McDonald's, or Walgreens, or Walmart, or what have you. This is like a real paying career at sixteen. How transformative is that for a family, right? Not just for that individual, but for the entire family.
Again, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, because I've had parents come afterwards, like, how can I sign up, right? So we have started those adult classes, because the curriculum is the same, right? We're teaching the same thing, it's just the environment and the speed and the pace may be a little different, right? But that is our goal. Like, we have adult classes going on right now downtown at Michigan Central Train Station, because that's one of our partners, and we do classes there, as well as our own facility. But, you know, we've had two hundred students since we started the Part One-O-seven class go through our course, and we had about thirty percent of them to actually officially pass and get their Part One-O-seven. That's, that's a good number, you know? It may not sound like, but that Part One-O-seven test is not easy. You have to learn meteorology and all types of things behind getting that license, just like a pilot for an airplane. So, you know, you're talking about youth learning at fifteen, and we go all the way down to five, right? So they can start at five, getting access and exposure to it. So imagine that child, by the time they reach sixteen, right? So I just, I wanted to throw that in there. And, you know, like you said, the possibilities are endless for other programs and things that we can bring. Only thing, we have to have space and opportunity, and we'll give that opportunity to the students.
Yeah. Only question I had, you know, I think both of you touched on, my question would have been, is this an after-school program, or is it fused during the regular day as a curriculum? You touched on it as an elective or something. And then the resources. And I know it depends on how large, you know, group you want to, you know, that you have, ballpark figure on, you know, just additional resources that the district may have to provide, you know, to bring the program in.
Got it. So I'll start back at the first question, as far as during school, after school. If it's up to me, like I told Mr. Roper, even at my own facility, it would run twenty-four-seven if it could. We've piloted a few programs with different schools, which, Ms. Lewis, I used to be at one of her old schools, where she was actually the first school that we were ever in, was Plymouth Educational, I forgot the list, Reston, yeah, and the Delta Academy, that was the other one we were at. But those two schools, we did in-school programming. So a current school that we worked with last year was Detroit Academy Arts and Sciences downtown. We were there, we actually got a classroom from them, you know, decorated it just like a teacher would normally do, you know, set up your classroom, and we had that class the entire year. And it was an elective STEM class for the students. So it was part of their schedule throughout the day. The beauty of it, even though we had one teacher of record there that was through our organization, we were able to bring other teachers in throughout the year. So for, you know, one of the quarters, because they do a four-quarter, we had one teacher for one quarter, another for second, third, and fourth quarters, teaching different subjects. So the thing about working with us is that we can change, just like we're changing with the new technology that comes out. My wife will say, why are you buying new things all the time? But that's because the tech is changing daily, right? So we stay up to date on all of those things. Not to say that a normal teacher couldn't, but it's a little bit better when you have a whole team behind doing all of that. So, you know, that's how we work with the during-the-day things, where, you know, we, me and Mr. Roper talked about maybe those last two hours of the day, then it leads to after-school programming, et cetera. But that's the beauty, it's flexible, resources-wise. The beauty, again, is we can take teachers that are already here, that are interested, and it's not, oh, it has to be a science, you know, science teacher or a tech teacher. No. I know there may be some in this room here, like, I'm a tech guy, but there are people that could be an English teacher, but their whole house is smart. They got smart devices everywhere. You know, it's other people that are interested in these activities. And we can offer it up, just like we can do with a basketball coach or a football coach, as after-school, that we can train them to help us facilitate the classes. We can also hire for students, and we work with usually the local universities. So out here, it would be like Macomb Community College, et cetera, that we can pull students from that are in these fields and do it as internships and working with us to provide the content and the classes here. So that part is the easy part, right? In getting the resources to help us facilitate the classes. The second part was, you know, having a space, which I'm seeing is pretty simple and easy right now, too. The third would have been curriculum, but we have all that, and we have materials. So the only thing, you know, we are going to do, and I was talking to Ms. Lewis about this, is, you know, working together to write grants specifically for Macomb and Mount Clemens. So those are things that we can work on. We write every day, you know, for Macomb County and for, I mean, I'm sorry, for Wayne County, you know, wherever we are, we're up in Washington. So we write specifically for those areas and things. So those are ways of handling those resource allocations. So those are ways of handling those resource allocations.
Thank you. One of the things that, uh, stood out to me and you, you all may remember this, but when we got the roof done next door, in, in the first assessment, I, I just remember saying, what? Uh, they, there was like a $2,000 or $3,000 charge when they first assessed the roof. They use drone technology to identify humidity in the roof. I was like, that's, I mean, this is, I gotta get another job, you know, but, uh, when, those are the things I think about, you know? I went home, we, we, we've had, we had extensive hours of conversation. We're talking about doing a, a family class, you know, and, and things of that nature. So we got some Michigan Tech conversation going to you.
Yeah.
We got some, we got some great opportunities and I just want you all to hear it first from, from Mr. Welch himself, so appreciate it.
I do have.
Yep.
I, I really like that. I'm a tech person, thirty, thirty plus years in tech. So this is very much needed, very much. And I applaud you for starting it and really powering through, cause I'm sure it hasn't been easy. Like it's been an uphill struggle. Um, but, um, I do have a few questions. So how many instructors do you currently have?
So throughout the year, like on staff, right now we have 12. In the summer, or when we ramp up, cause in the summer, we, like this past summer, we were in 18 locations. Um, that's schools and organizations, right? We had 62 people working this summer. Um, so we ramp up and down depending on what the capacity need is. Um, so yes, 12 full-time, you know, workers at the moment that are all capable and ready, plus a volunteer force and things like that behind it as well.
Okay, and then your instructors, do you train them? Or is it they, they already have that background?
It's a mix. Some have tech backgrounds or have always been interested in tech or something. But we are, I'm very, very specific on how my instructors teach and facilitate our curriculum. Uh, so we do have training for everybody. I don't care if you've been in tech for 60 years, you know, you're still going to come through our training program. Um, and something that we've had to add, cause again, we're only six years old, right? But something we added, uh, which I give credit to Daz for that and, and Mr. Hood down there, uh, is our professional development as well. Cause in the beginning, I used to just hire technologists, that was it. I found out that was a problem, cause many technologists historically are introverts, right? They like to sit in the corner, they don't do the public, right? Um, but what I learned was if I can teach my six-year-old over here, you know, how to do this, why can't I teach somebody else that's an educator? Uh, so what we found out is we had to find people that were people, people persons first, right? Able to work with kids specifically. Uh, if they can work with kids, handle a classroom and be in there, then it was easier for me to teach them how to teach the subjects to the kids. And that's what we focus on now, is pulling people that are, like when we go to Wayne State and all of them, where we start now is the college of, education. We used to start in the technical college, we've reversed that now. We started education college and then go get people outside of there and go forward. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, and then do you, um, how many, um, kids do you currently have enrolled? Um, or students, I should say, I shouldn't say kids, students. And then, um, do you have the ability, I know you were talking about internships to teach, but do you have the opportunity for internships going the other way where your graduates would have internships in other businesses?
Most definitely. Uh, I'll start with the, the first question, how many? Um, that's a changing landscape this year, uh, which we all know, the school funding took a while to get approved and all of that. So normally come July of the year, you know, we are, which I'm sure is the same with your district, you're starting to plan for the fall, right? Um, usually come August, first week of August, we'll have, you know, 30 contracts signed for the year with different schools and organizations. This year we have five. Um, and now we're, now though, since the budget was released, what, like three weeks, four weeks now, something like that? It's ramping up fast, right? Um, so currently we have about, about 3,200 active students in our program right now. And that's across schools and other organizations that we're working with right now. Come January, that will probably be about five times that amount, uh, currently. Uh, we just signed, which Mr. Roper's, you know, he knows, cause they filled out a form too for Mount Clemens. You know, we've applied for a few grants and things that we've had over time, like the, the MyLEAP Michigan Out of School Time Grant that we've had now for three years, this will be our third year if we get it this year. But we utilize that funding to go to schools. So we just have the schools say that they want us there, they have to fill out a form that validates that. And then we apply for funding for that school. And we did put Mount Clemens down as one of the schools for that. That's the middle school. Um, however, you know, tho- those numbers will ramp up significantly come January.
Okay, and then the internship?
The internship one, so as far as our students, I think, what is it? Out of those 12 that are named, about six of them are previous students right now, that are currently working for us now. Uh, whether they're in school, cause we have two that go to Michigan Tech, two that are at Wayne State, but they, they are working for us on the outside time of that. And that's what I love, because it's nobody better than a person you trained up to come work for you for the organization you trained them through, right? Uh, plus it's a success story. Um, so we can also show like, hey, you know, we're not just trying to, you know, have your student or your child, whoever we're relating to, a part of the program for five minutes, right? We want to see them succeed in life and for a fruitful future. Um, so we welcome that all the time. But also our people are working in other organizations and schools and things that we have worked with. Uh, so we have some students that are now working for the YMCA. We have some working for the union, if you've heard of that organization, some working for Boys and Girls Club. You know, so not only are we training up to work for us, or we're training to work for anybody. Uh, we've had some go on and work for Microsoft as internships. We've had them work for a few other companies you may not know of yet, but like Birdstop or Aerospace Link. Uh, we have some other companies that have received students from us. Uh, if you heard, I'll throw this one out there, if you heard about that Droneut, Donut Delivery that was done, the Mayor Duggan in Detroit, it was a couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was our student that did that.
Oh, that's.
Our student was flying the drone to deliver those donuts. And that was a student of ours that came through our program. It still works for us, but he was, they hired us to do that with them. So that's just an example of the, the reach that we've had.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welch, appreciate you.
Any additional questions, comments?
I have a quick question for you, Mr. Welch.
Yes, sir. That's why I did, what I did.
Now, my question is very simple, cause I already know you're going through particulars with the superintendent of the district. Cause you said Mount Clemens was one of those schools you put down for the, for the grant writing process. Uh, what's the timeline? What, what, I mean, how fast can this get started if everything goes as planned?
We can come over, my wife is, you know, she loves interior design, we can come tomorrow and start looking at this place. No, but honestly, you know, what we talked about was trying to ramp up to start for January, right? That way we could start advertising now, you know, get the space together, all of it, look into funding options, things like that, to be able to kickstart and, and I think you said the end of January is when the, some, you know, the new semester, all of that. And then start then, that's, that's my goal, right? Uh, but advertising and starting to prep for it and all that would happen as soon as next month to me. You know, before the holidays, start getting flyers in the hands of the students to take home, start announcing things, press release. You know, all of those different things to get people to start signing up would be my goal. And that's what I talked about with Mr. Roper the other day. You know, as soon as we could, we, we're ready.
Okay. And the, and the target, um, audience, I think I, I came in just a few minutes late. Um, target audience is going to be with the middle school or elementary, or is it all the way around?
All the above, you know, we, different programs can be catered to the different age groups. Uh, you know, our core competency is high, I mean, upper elementary and middle school, right? Because many programs exist for high school students. Like most community-based programs are for high school. And the reason they do that is cause they work with companies that are looking at a fast return on investment, right? I didn't look at it that way. I look at the long-term investment in our youth. And you start younger, like I have a high school student sitting over there. It's harder to te- teach and show him than it is an elementary school student, right? We can do it with high school, but me having now my third child has been in or through high school, I know it is harder to change their mind on what they're thinking they want to do or how to do it, right? So when you start young, you, like, we send a lot of our students to high school programs. Why? Because they've been with us for years and they're looking for programs instead of the programs looking for them. And that's what we get calls literally every day from those programs that can't fill up because they don't have enough students for those high school programs. So, but for us, our goal is to work with all the age groups. We don't want the ones that are, but we talked to some seniors the other day in the hallway and we asked them, how, what, and they were like, oh, we're excited. You know, and they were sports people, right? They're wrestlers, whatever, here at the school. They're like, we would sign up for it tomorrow, right? So we want to still get those seniors, those juniors and, you know, those freshmen, but we want to also start with those kids that are just getting here, just starting to get wet behind the ears and can start to learn these things.
Is this something that you would offer to other schools to come here?
I mean, initially we're thinking about ours, but it will be a community-based opportunity too, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Welch.
Thank you. Mister, I will say this too, and Mr. Welch happens to be a member of, uh, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, which we won't hold against him as alpha men, but, uh, so him, he, he is bringing some of his fraternity brothers, I believe, are coming to help us for our turkey giveaway on Sunday, so.
Correct.
We are, we already put him to work, you know, so he's in the family already, but we appreciate you.
I think we got about seven or eight that are already committed, so yes.
We appreciate you. And thanks to the family for coming and being here for this exciting, uh, night. And I know you don't have anything better to do than the kids at the board being.
Forced our way into the door.
That's right.
And, and I'll put it out there, see the little, hurry up, come here, Roman. Really, really fast, just so you guys will know for the future. Um, you know, I am the excuse, he got himself dressed.
Independent, looking good.
You're his type of company, so go ahead, introduce yourself.
Um, I'm Norman Welch. And I'm the boss of 413, and we direct it.
So just like, I just want to make sure I know that. That he is the boss, so just wanted to put that out there.
Great job, good job, boss.
Thank you very much.
Item seven on the agenda this evening is the, um, amendment, proposed amendment to our, our goals. Uh, sent an email, uh, to the board a couple of, three weeks ago, inquiring whether anybody had any thoughts, ideas regarding, uh, the goals that we have on record. Um, that if they had any concerns or any ideas for amendment, we could discuss them at a work session as opposed to having a full blown out, uh, retreat to deal with, uh, board goals. There was, um, and before the meeting last week, there are no one that, uh, had sent any recommendations or mentioned anything. And I opened it up for the floor at that time, um, for any suggestions. Um, there is, um, one, one proposed amendment, uh, to the current goals and it's under the heading of student achievement. The current goal in that area reads, uh, that under student achievement, the, let's see, let's see, the current goal is that graduation rate will increase by 2%. We adopted that, uh, goal in 2023. At that time, our graduation rate was under 70%. Uh, the state, um, at that time, the state recommendation, uh, was a minimum of 2% or was 2%. Uh, we went with that. Um, and we had steady, since 2023, the, the graduation rate has increased. Uh, which brings me to my recommendation of why change, uh, the, the graduation requirement, uh, for the, that purpose of evaluation of the superintendent. Uh, the class of 2025 graduated at 100%. The class of 2026 cannot increase by 2%. If we fa- if we went from 100% to 99%, it's a failed goal. If we went from 100% to 100%, it's a failed goal because we did not increase by 2%. So the, the proposed amendment that I would put before the, the group, the, the board is that the item, uh, goal two for the graduation rate, that it reads that the graduation rate meets or exceeds the state's graduation average. That's, I'm putting that in a form of a motion.
Support.
And second by member Dee Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to amend the current goals to add the graduation rate will exceed, will meet or exceed the state's average graduation rate.
Do we know what the current state rate is?
It's not 100%.
Uh, uh, that's where I'm going, I'm going rabbit hole. I'm going down this rabbit hole. Eighty-two point eight three. And I, I got so much faith in my superintendent and I know he's looking at eighty-two point, what is it, eight-three?
Yeah.
I know you laughing at that, and he's like, what is that? What is that?
Graduate all of our kids unless it's out of our control. We plan on graduating 100% every year. Why, why else are we here?
And I don't want to make it for, we, um, digress from advancing or, or being as, as, as good as we are. A hundred percent, I mean, what's that, an A+? On a regular scale, I guess, 4.0, some of that. But, um, eighty-two, that's, I mean, that's, that's good for the state average.
Sure.
I think we can do better. I know we can do better, and we are doing better.
That's why my proposal said meets or exceeds the state's average graduation rate.
And I almost want to be a devil's advocate and say, can we just say exceeds the state average?
Or put a percentage.
So, so here's the, the, the piece to that that's out of our control is that when we get a student who comes in as a senior, but doesn't have senior credits, that, that can hurt, that, that will count against us if that person isn't qualified to graduate. And, and you know how transient our population is. So I, I don't want to set myself up or the district up for failure. Um, but realistically, you know, it, it took a lot to get to 100% chasing a kid down throughout the summer to do work and, and taking Chromebooks and things. So I think, uh, meeting or exceeding is fair and, but we're always going to shoot for 100.
I'd, I'd like to see a number on it just because, um, I think, you know, not having a number, you can, kind of get away with things, so to speak. And I don't think 82%, I'd hate to get down to 82%, which is the average, right, or 83%. So can, can we at least put like 90% or 93%?
You can add, you can offer an amendment to the motion. The motion has been moved into second, you can offer an amendment to the motion.
I, I do have a question though, and maybe Dr. Lewis can answer this. So if we had, how many children would we have to have? If, if it were like 92% or 93%, how many would have to be failing at 92%?
So we have 52 seniors right now. You would have to have 47.84, so 48 students to be at 92%. So we would be, we would have five students not graduating.
Okay. And that's 92%?
That's 92%. Can I add to that though?
Can you add to that?
To your.
Oh, yeah.
The graduation rate changes every year.
Yes, it does.
Right, up or down. So just in case it's, it's, it, and sometimes it's a drastic change, um, from year to year, so.
What, how many, how many seniors do we have?
Fifty-two.
And we had very similar last year, right?
Yeah, fifty-three last year.
But that percentage would be equative to how many kids we have? Or how many seniors we have? I know it'll fluctuate if it goes down to like 40 kids.
So not the number of kids, the state average changes drastically from year to year.
Oh, okay. I'm not worried about the state.
The number of students won't change. The number of students won't change, that, you know, the average, because if you got fifty kids, you got fifty kids. If you got forty kids, you got forty kids. So the number of students won't change, the state average or the, our average, because you know, it's based on the conglomerate of, of the total students.
Right. There actually is a number on this amendment. We just, like you said, it changes every year. So that state average graduation rate will be a number every year that we are to meet or exceed, which I think is fair.
I, I would, go ahead.
I, I would like to put amendment on the floor to at least have a ninety percent um, graduation rate uh, as a goal for the superintendent.
It's been moved to amend the, the current uh, proposal that the graduation re, meets or exceeds the state average to uh, Ms., Ms. Kahoon is offering amendment to the motion that the graduation rate is ninety percent. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to the amendment? Motion dies, lack of second. Any further discussion, comments, concerns regarding motion on the floor?
I definitely agree with uh, meet and exceeds the average. I think that makes a lot of sense. I like to see meet and see, it sees the average of the state. Cause I think that's more of a realistic number. Compared to the whole state as one. Cause that's who we're really against is the state. I, I feel like we are measured against the state.
Yeah.
It's more um, uh, a representation of us.
I mean, assessments and everything are, right? There's always, the state average is always compared to the state. The, what I should ask for, but this is your goal for me, but what I, what I, what I should ask for realistically, but I'm o, I'm okay with this is, is it a hundred percent of students that are on track to graduate, right? Because we, we could have, again, five kids that enroll with us that are nowhere near graduating, but they're in a senior class. But I'm okay with, with what you said, because we're going to do what we have to do. But I just want that to be known and we'll, we'll be okay.
Hey man, is that what you want? But uh, that's not the motion, that's not the motion on the floor.
Right. In addition, any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing the scene, none? Caller over.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item eight, human resources, eight A. New hire, eight A one, first grade teacher. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the agenda item eight?
I just want to add to that, Jen has had a personal matter tonight, so she's not here. But um, I, I know there was some question, and we talked about this at the workshop, there were some questions before about uh, the first grade teacher, because we are, we were losing a first grade teacher, but I, and, and I shared at the workshop that the first grade teacher that uh, has decided to leave us was not a certified teacher. And our new hire uh, is a twelve-year vet certified teacher. So we're excited about that uh, that addition to our, our, our team.
Yeah, has this teacher already started?
No, um, which I respect. It selfishly, I didn't like, but I respect that she wanted to transition from her kids and, and take a couple, I think another week or two, or right, right after the break possibly, which I respect.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns, agenda item eight, human resource new hire? Agenda item nine, business committee. Nine A, financial reports. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the financial reports? Nine B, contract listing. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the contract listings? Agenda item ten, superintendent's comment, Mr. Superintendent.
All right. Good evening again. I just have a few updates. We had a, a great cabinet level meeting yesterday in professional development with the, with the team and a lot of good things happening at our buildings. Too much to even mention and keep up with, but I'll just hit some of the points and, and give a few things. Just give, I like to get, always give you our, our current numbers for our, our GSRP are at forty-eight students. And growing, they have a few more enrollment packets on their desk right now. I know this question was asked before, and I think this is important. Last year, I, I, Mr. Pittman was able to finalize the number. Last year, we were able to, I think we had about sixty students and about fifty percent of them now attend uh, Seminole. So we, we've been able to retain at least fifty percent of those, those GSRP students. And I know that was an important number and obviously we want a hundred percent. But we, that's a good start for us. Uh, at our elementary, a lot of great things happening from focusing on attendance and Mr. Fringer's over there and he's, he's in the trenches over there and uh, the, the element, Seminole's doing a, a lot of great things. Again, focusing on attendance, they have initiatives, they have donations, bike donations, they, uh, we looked at the data, attendance was a, a issue last year. And so they've been focused on encouraging their kids to be in school. And so they've come up to uh, in a very creative way. And has, have raised money and raised donations to give away bikes every month for students that attend so much, put their name in the hat, uh, for lack of better terms, right, Mr. Fringer, I don't want to mess it up. They, they get drawn, I think they've been giving away, actually been giving away two or three bikes a month.
Yeah.
And it's a big assembly, you can see on social media, Miss, in one of their posts, uh, Mr. Fringer and Mrs. Uh, uh, Miss Tina, man, I can't, I don't just lose Tina's, McNeely's, uh, and Miss McNeely riding bikes into the gym, which I was nervous. One thing, I don't know if she talked to you, Mr. Frager. We also are making a connection with them, with the bikes and uh, our connection at AAA uh, for helmets to go along with those bikes too. So we'll be giving away helmets, but that initiative is going good. More importantly, they've seen the impact on student attendance and the chronic absenteeism numbers uh, dropped. And, and you'll hear about those things in detail uh, next month at our building level and district uh, update, at next month's board meeting. So um, good things happening at Seminole. Uh, secondary uh, this week, tomorrow hosting uh, I won't say what school, but we have uh, about fifty eighth graders coming to visit, um, potential uh, future students. And uh, we're excited about that. Mrs. Uh, Heinz is taking them through the uh, the full tour and laying out the red carpet and, and showing them our school and what we offer. And uh, so we're excited about that opportunity to engage those, those youngsters. FAFSA completion, our, our, Mrs. Lowe and uh, Mrs. Terry, our counselor, are working on getting our students started on completing their FAFSA forms as, uh, in partnership with Ms. Alms. And our college app, uh, application process, student and helping students apply for uh, you know, college. Pharmacy tech program is ready to start through a collaboration, Mrs. Lowe brought to us with uh, CVS. There, actually, we had a, a partners uh, meeting, luncheon a couple of weeks back. And I forget the lady's title at CVS, but I want to, she's up there. So she's looking at bringing a pharmacy tech program to our kids that may happen during advisory. Uh, so I'll, I'll bring you more information when we get that solidified. You'll have on the next, at the next board meeting, we are finalizing a new hire, another certified teacher joining us, a Spanish teacher. I don't know when the last time we had a certified Spanish teacher, it hasn't been since I've been here. Or maybe, obviously, since Dante has been a student. But we uh, are excited about that opportunity and look forward to our kids having just the highly qualified people in front of them. We also have forty students attend McComb Community College uh, on a field trip where they uh, were able to just explore McComb Community College, the career and tech opportunities there, as well as co, uh, traditional college. And Dr. Lewis, one of, one of her, her babies is, we're working on our students getting dual enrolled. And, and as we shared before, one of our goals is to have every student that leave here has had some dual enrollment or early college uh, experience. And, and at some point, we might even come to you all and make it that a requirement. As well as career and technical, counting for, for that as well. District updates, uh, we had, there's been a lot of conversation, I've been trying to keep you all in the loop. We talked about it extensively at the workshop about uh, thirty-one AA funds. As you all may know, there was a lawsuit filed and several districts and counties are filing lawsuits now. McComb County um, was the lead uh, county in that filed a, an injunction that, on a thirty-one AA funding and the, the base, the, the summary of that is there was some stipulations that were put into, the language that was put into, if we, if we accept these funds, then we got, we have to um, accept some, some other uh, extensive investigation or other criteria that uh, that has never been done before. So, you know, in my eyes, when it comes to any of, of the funding for our students, I think they're entitled to that and we shouldn't have to, 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 to jump through hoops to get money to our kids. So um, that injunction has, I don't know where they are, but we just got an update yesterday that there's, that the deadline, there was a deadline that we had to commit or not uh, about to accept that, those funds, that has been pushed back to December third or fourth, I believe. So we have more time and more to come on that, and I'll keep you updated as we find out more information. Thanks to our uh, special populations coordinator, Ms. Alyssa, Ms. McNamara. She has uh, been doing assessments since she's been here on all of our program and offerings. And as you know, we hired a part-time social worker here, that you know, the, the, the mental health needs for all of our students. It's just all, five oh four, you name it, uh, our kids have a lot of needs. And so we brought on a part-time social worker, but uh, we are also in the process in interviewing and looking to hire a, a full-time social worker for the secondary as well, to work with our um, our special student population. And we are also, and you all know this, we've had an extensive conversation since, since I've been here, how expensive it is to outsource our uh, psychologists and for referrals and um, assessments. And so we are, um, got the okay from uh, Ms. Dawes, because she's not here, so we spend money when she's not around. But we are, we, that posting has.
Better be careful though.
That's a joke, trust me. Yeah. She um, we've had a, that, we've had that job posted for a part-time for years, from what I've been told, it's been here since I've been up. We haven't had one applicant. And uh, we are moving to, to uh, offer that full-time now, so. Uh, we are going to start some interviews here soon and looking forward to bringing that resource to our kids. A few dates to lock in. We are, Dante, you may know this, um, Kelly met her, uh, actually was big, was, this was a big thing for her. She was uh, very involved in this in the past when she worked for the high school. But I guess for the first time since maybe two thousand seventeen or eighteen on Saturday, this Saturday, and you all are invited. We would love to have you there, I think it's important for the community to see us. In the community, we are going to participate in the uh, holiday uh, parade that Mount Clemens has, we'll be walking with the parade crew. So we're looking forward to that, we're inviting our families, students, and really excited. On Sunday, it's our third annual turkey giveaway, we're really excited about that. We have upped it, we're giving away seven hundred turkeys. We have raised about nine thousand dollars in donations to, to fund that uh, opportunity for the community. And uh, really looking forward to that. We'll have a number, like last year, we'll have a number of volunteers from the community and all over the place out to, to take part in that. And, and there's nothing like that, um, and, and our students. And so there's nothing like, you know, one of the things that we believe in as an organization, as a district, is that civic engagement and that community service, right? It's important to, to give back, it's important to, uh, for our kids to make that connection. And uh, and the need is there. Last year, the first year, we, uh, we did it, we had turkeys, we had a few left over and we took them to Karns and gave them out to that community they were able to access at the uh, recreation center. And then uh, last year, we were, the turkeys were gone in two hours. They're like, the word is out, people are looking forward to it. And so we're looking uh, forward to, to getting those, uh, that's this Sunday, you are invited uh, to that as well. What's the time? Ten, ten to?
Ten to two.
Ten till they're gone. Yep, twelve, they'll be gone by twelve.
Last year it said ten to two.
Yeah, ten till they're gone.
Them fifty?
Right.
It's gone.
Yeah. And again, last but not least, next month's board meeting, we, you know, we invite the community and everyone out, we've talked about this a lot. It'd be a good time for people to come and get uh, firsthand knowledge and information about the great things that are happening and where we are, right? We believe in transparency and so our principals, our building leaders, uh, Dr. Lewis, Ms. McNamara, I've asked, everybody will be reporting out on their uh, their departments and um, buildings and all the great things that are happening and our opportunities uh, that are, that are, that still exist with us. So we look forward to that, that meeting and, and those are my comments.
Any questions, Superintendent?
Quick question, uh, pharmacy tech, you mentioned that, so is that going to be a, is that in the works or that's going to start or, okay, this conversation?
Yeah. There's a little more to the conversation, but you just gotta, you just gotta get the details ironed out of when, and what that looks like.
Agenda item ten. Excuse me, agenda item eleven, board comments. Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Ms. Kahoon?
Thank you, Mr. Thank you always to the faculty, the administration, the superintendent, the principals, my fellow board members, um, just keep doing an amazing job with the school district, with the kids. And um, being creative in a way that helps engage the kids is things that we, that I would, that I like seeing. Cause uh, you need to be creative to do things like that and to get kids engaged and parents and families. I would like to see if it's not already being done, just maybe some, um, not only the community colleges, but the trade schools, SEMCA and AIS um, programs that we can do with them as well. That would be amazing. Um, hap, happy Thanksgiving to all the families in the district. Thank you so much to Mr. Welch and his family. Thank you, Mr. Roper, for bringing me. And like, I had no idea that that was even an option and that was even out there, like, that's incredible. I'm excited to see that come together. Um, I'm looking forward to taking part this Sunday in the giveaway, my very first time, so I'm sure it'll be amazing. And uh, I, I'm sure I'll be uh, not too cold if, if it happens very quickly, we won't be too chilly.
I think we're expecting like fifty-five degrees.
Right? I do want to take a moment though to address um, something that happened last week at the state board of education. What I witnessed there was very disturbing, um, to say the least. And what the state board of education did to push the new health and sex ed guideline standards through in just a few short months. I'm actually happy to learn that we at Mount Clemens do not have a sex ed curriculum currently. But um, I did hear there that there is um, um, possibly a new, a, a look into the, uh, to offering sex ed here at Mount Clemens. And with the new health ed and sex guideline standards, um, Mount Clemens as a board and the sex ed advisory does not have to adopt them as written at all. So I would encourage everyone to read them. Those that have not taken part in reading them, please do so. They are very disturbing to me as a parent, I would not want that in front of my child. But um, nonetheless, that's what's out there, but we do not have to approve them or adopt them in Mount Clemens. So um, the um, there is a sex ed advisory board that gets created to go through these curriculums and to make suggestions, but us as a board will have to um, either approve it or not approve it. And part of the sex ed advisory boards are parent, parents are encouraged and um, very encouraged to get on the advisory board, clergy.
Students.
Students, things like that. So I just ask all of the community and uh, parents to actually look into all of this and to get engaged in this if you want or don't want these standards in front of your children, so. And that's pretty much it. I hope everyone has a great holiday. Thank you so much, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Kahoon. Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lot of good things happening here, code three-one-three is exciting. I mean, that's fabulous. And the pharmacy tech program, working on that, that's wonderful too. Lot of good things happening here. This is a great district, so to everyone, I wish you a blessed and beautiful Thanksgiving, enjoy time with your family.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Board President.
Um, I would like to say thank you to Superintendent for bringing Mr. Welch and his family out to give a presentation on code three-one-three. Think that this is thinking outside the box, um, compared to other districts and kind of trying to see what our kids would be engaged in, um, outside of college and career tech. Um, also, it's great to see that we're, uh, bringing back a certified Spanish teacher, uh, that's going to work. Um, also great to see that our students are taking tours to colleges and universities. Um, thank you to our staff at Seminole for their working on the attendance. I know that is a very key component when regards to, um, the learning environment for our students in our past, um, data. Um, and just thank you to our full board, um, and our admin for supporting, uh, us as a board and receiving training for, through M A S B. Um, last month I got the chance to attend a conference. Uh, it was very great, uh, the drive there wasn't, uh, the weather was a little unsettling.
A little wet.
A little wet, to say the least. Um, but I'm looking forward to next year's, uh, it will be, mark your calendars. Now it'll be three days, October fifteenth to the seventeenth at the Lansing Center. Uh, so put that in your calendars. I'll remind everyone, uh, once that comes out next year. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you all for the work that you do. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
Thank you, sir. Uh, my comment is very simple. Happy holidays.